This is the work session for Tuesday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty five, and we'll call the meeting to order. First of all, on A, we're going to have Recreation Center tax presentation and discussion presented by Drew Sanders, the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and before it proceed, can we make sure that Mayor Medina's online and can hear us okay?
I can hear you, can everyone hear me?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Medina, thank you, Mayor Protem. Well, this evening, I'm here, as promised, to talk about the recreation sales tax issue and go through what exactly happened, where the money is, and give some additional information from what was shared previously. So in our introduction tonight, these are the burning questions: Where are the over-collected recreation funds? How much was over-collected? Some information on how this occurred and our future options. So the big important question that we keep getting asked is where are the over-collected funds? Well, just a little history, the recreation fund was established in two thousand and two and held separately from the other funds, just like we do with every other enterprise fund. Our internal analysis indicates that we can account for every penny collected during that time, and all of it is accounted for and continues to be used for the intended purpose. And don't take our word for it, this is confirmed by our external audits. So how much was over-collected? Well, the amounts over-collected based upon point two zero percent are, from fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-four, exactly two million, one hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars and forty-five cents. Now, twenty-five or twenty twenty-five is projected only because the year is not ended yet, and we can't, won't know exactly until the end of the year, but right now, our finance director projects seven hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and thirty and six thousand dollars and sixty-six. Our total projected over-collected by the end of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five is projected to be two million, eight hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars. So how did this occur? Well, we have to rewind back to two thousand and one, and I understand, if my information's correct, that this took as many as three ballot questions before this was finally passed by the voters, but it was finally passed in two thousand and one, wherein the voters authorized a measure to get a bond issuance to pay for construction of a new recreation center. At that time, the voters authorized a point five five percent sales tax, and it was meant to be for the operation and maintenance of the building, but also for the debt service. The authorized sales tax was to sunset when the bond was repaid, or on December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, whichever came first. I think there was a little bit of fuzzy math at that time, just to point out that the, excuse me, the ballot question was in November of two thousand and one, so the construction and bond was not to be issued until two thousand and twenty-two, so really, it should have been set to sunset in two thousand and twenty-two. Here nor there, it's what it is. Moving forward to two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, at that time, the city council and the city manager started to workshop the matter because they recognized that twenty years was coming up on that bond, and there was no ongoing funding mechanism for the recreation center. They did decide to introduce a ballot initiative in two thousand and eighteen, which was well in advance of the two thousand and twenty-one's tax sunset, which was a really good move, and speaking to the former city manager, who was in the chair at that time, he told me that they did that, thinking that if it didn't pass, they had one more bite of the apple to maybe go back to voters in two thousand and twenty, to again, try to secure that, but it passed in two thousand and eighteen. At that time, the council settled on requesting a sales tax, that the sales tax be reduced from point five five percent to point three five percent, and be continued in perpetuity to pay for the recreation center. Then the ballot measure passed, as I mentioned, in two thousand and eighteen, that was to reduce the sales tax amount at the end of two thousand and twenty-one. At the end of that, the, once the ballot measure passed, there's another step, whether this is the state legislature or a city council, wherein the council was required in the form of an ordinance to enact the tax measure. We can't just take the vote and enact the tax measure, it has to be done by ordinance. And we just passed, excuse me, a similar ordinance in November, ordinance thirteen fifty, that was for that purpose. However, the required ordinance back in two thousand and eighteen and beyond never occurred. So moving forward to November of two thousand and twenty-two, the twenty-year recreation center bond was paid off. However, in the absence of that required tax ordinance, there wasn't anything in place to signal the change in the tax amount, and then even though the ballot initiative was passed by the voters, it was not and could not become effective absent that enabling Fast forward to September of this year, we were in the middle of our fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget preparation process, when we were looking at our funding sources and looking for other possible ways to help fund our park system a little better, and we looked to the recreation center to see if there was any room there to help us with parks in general. Although that was deemed improper for use in the parks, this two thousand and eighteen ballot question was revealed, which led us to investigate further and thereby discover the over-collection problem. At that point, we moved quickly to declare this to the city council, and then shortly thereafter, at the community at large, at the next city council meeting. So there's been a lot of speculation and wonder about what the actual fiscal years that are involved in this. Boiling this down is fiscal years twenty-two and through twenty-five. So even though that ballot question passed in two thousand and eighteen, it really did not have any effect until the end of two thousand and twenty-one, whichever came first, and obviously, the December twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one came first, so we're just counting that as the affected fiscal year, the higher standard in that case. Now, what do we do now, now that we know this problem? Well, we have sought some outside legal counsel in order to ensure that you are advised properly. There's a time-sensitive and then a non-time-sensitive portion of this. The time-sensitive portion is that we need to lower that tax as soon as possible. We did that, that will be effective January one, two thousand and twenty-six. The time-sensitive portion is on its way to be corrected. The not, and I put in there as time-sensitive, we are, know that we want to be expeditious and not drag our feet on this, but we also recognize that there's some more legal analysis that needs to occur in order to make sure you are accurately informed on your options, and we want to be, although we want to be as expeditious as possible, but we want to avoid making anything worse or encountering any preventable legal or procedural errors. In the meantime, I want to remind the council and assure you, as the, well as the community, that the over-collected money is safe, it's accounted for, is literally in the bank, so we just need to know or figure out what to do with it next. So in summary, we know exactly how much has been over-collected minus, you know, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, but we estimate that the final amount will be two million, eight hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars. They are accounted for, they're in the bank, we can point to them right now, and if you want to look at it as like a proverbial glass jar, the money's stuffed there, ready to be used and disposed of as appropriate when the time comes, and that's where we're at. So I can tell the council that we did receive notice back from our special legal counsel on this, and it, as expected, it's not as easy as it sounds. And so there's going to be a lot more that we need to put into this and make sure that we take the right steps and guide the council appropriately towards the final action on this. With that being said, that's the presentation, that's the long and short of what occurred, so I am open to any questions.
Drew, that, that two million plus dollars, why can't that be refunded back?
That's a great question. So the reason it can't be refunded, and I want to be careful with the word can't, is just would be extremely difficult to do, it's sales tax, and every one of us likely spent sales tax even today. And the problem is, is we don't know who all those people are, and likely, we could say, well, Cortez residents or something, or even Montezuma County residents, but then it would be exceptionally difficult, just with the nine thousand people that live in Cortez, or the twenty-six thousand people that live in Montezuma County, who lived here, when, how long, where did they go, you are looking at years of work that, and is probably still will not get handled properly. That is a very difficult task to do, and the reality is, it's just not something that we have the bandwidth to handle. But I just remind, the long and short, sales tax versus property tax, if this was property tax or your mill levy, we could go back and say specifically, you know, property owners, this is how much it is, and go back to that, this is sales tax that you spend every day if you go to any store or food establishment here in the city.
Thank you. Is the outside counsel the ones that are going to advise us on what we need to do or can do with that money?
We are going to work with them to try to come up with things that are reasonable for us, so we can try to take it from really wide to more concise suggestions that are realistic for our council. I'm really hoping to, and I requested it today, for our city attorney, our parks director, finance director and I to meet, and we'll have to do it virtually because they're on the front range, with the attorney, talk a little more about what those options are, and then I'm hoping to have them talk to you and give some legal advice in an executive session, it'll have to be in January.
I have a question regarding the funds that were collected for years. So in theory, they are located in an account right now, the two million plus is in an account right now, and why was this not used for the operation and the maintenance of the rec center during that time?
Just because there was a, you know, fund balance that was growing, we need, you know, some sort of backup, and we did use that an awful lot, and if you'll recall, last year, water boilers were going out. I, great, remind me what else had gone out, there were some water heaters had gone out, we had to replace items in the shower. It's a twenty-year-old building and it's aging quickly. Also, you'll, or invite your recollection to our two thousand and twenty-six budget, they're spending about two point one million dollars on needed upgrades over there, and upgrades isn't even the right word, it's needed repairs and deferred maintenance that needs to be done.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, or help me understand this, so last year, when we put all that money into, or put money into some maintenance issues, it came out of this two million dollars, or it did not come out of this two million dollars?
It's out of the same fund, it's just the two point eight million dollars is in there, or there is two point eight million dollars and more, but that's all, you know, needed to take care of not only the maintenance of the, the maintenance, sorry, the operation, day-to-day operation of the recreation center fund, but maintenance or repairs. There's the two sides of it, and the maintenance or repairs is wildly costly, as demonstrated by the two point one million I just pointed out for next year.
And the maintenance projects we have scheduled for two thousand and twenty-six is also, in theory, at this point in time, we have that, those budgeted out of this monies that's sitting there in the account right now, correct?
Exactly, yeah.
Thanks for clarification.
Will we have to bring this back in front of the voters for them to help make that decision on what we do with the money?
That's, that's a possibility, and, but we want to be really careful with that because I'm not a hundred percent sure we can do that, in fact, our legal counsel indicates that that might be a legal hurdle that we can't get over. We have to explore that much more in depth, so, yeah, possibly, but if so, that'll come to you to help guide us on that decision, but I can't just say for sure. That's the problem with our options, like, they're nebulous and complicated and wide right now, and we have to narrow this down, and it's not just a simple yes or no answer.
Do you have any timeline on how long it will take to narrow down these decisions or choices?
My hope is that we can get, you know, work throughout this month and perhaps next month, and I'm really hoping by the end of January, we can have a pretty good handle on it. We are also up against our charter update and all that goes into that, and we're trying to force an awful lot of information through a smaller pipe, as it were, so I'm hoping that we can at least separate those a little bit, where this is not as time-sensitive now, and come into the end of January and give council some, some good legitimate options to consider, and then we can start moving forward from there.
I want to tell the council that Mayor Medina is actually on a phone line, and she can comment at any time. Do you have anything you want to say, Mayor?
Thanks, Dennis. I guess I'm curious too, like, what is collecting less sales tax until we meet this amount? Another option? Or can we not just change future sales tax collection?
Okay, if I understand you right, Mayor, I think you said, can't we just start collecting at a lower rate, is that accurate?
Yes.
Yes, we can, in fact, that is in play and will take place on January one, two thousand and twenty-six, so yes, we will be collecting at the point three five percentage point at that point.
I, no, I mean even lower than that until, to make up for the over-collection.
That may be a possible option that we will explore, that, that's a possibility as well.
Okay.
But I don't want to commit to it.
And then I'm curious, like, how, is the community there, have we been hearing a lot from the community, or, yeah, that's my other big question.
Well, I think we would need to rely on council somewhat, I think we would need to rely on who's attending meetings and so on. What I'm hearing, and what I'm, and we're hearing at City Hall, is we're not hearing an awful lot of uproar on this, honestly, what we're hearing mostly, I mean, there are some upset people, and then there's some people that I've spoken to as early as today that aren't even aware of it. And so I think we have a wide range of knowledge on this, even though it's been publicized pretty well, but in the meantime, we don't have an awful lot of outrage at this point, but I think the community is kind of waiting for us to get here tonight and give an explanation, and so that may still be coming.
Okay, does council have any other questions? All right, we'll move on to B. Patrick Coleman, our city attorney, has been under the weather with an operation, but he's joining us on the phone, he's gracious enough to make a presentation on charter revisions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem and the council and Mayor Medina. You had asked that we present some options as far as possible amendments to the charter, and what we've done is, we've taken the charter, which also included the city code, and they, for some reason, in the past, they've always adopted those as one document. Our first recommendation will be that they be split into two separate documents. The charter is a process that has to be amended through the vote of the people. The city code is amended by ordinance, approved by council. So right now, we're just focusing on the charter, and what you have in front of you is the charter with any references to the city code deleted, and it's in a track changes format, so you'll see strikeouts for things that we are suggesting be deleted, and additions are shown for things that are going to be added, and Drew, is that in red font? I can't tell from here, the additions.
We, we only see black, there's no red at this point.
Okay, is, is it, okay.
Additions look underlined.
Well, they're in all caps, okay, it's done in all caps, which is the standard format that, like, if you've ever seen a senate or house bill at the state legislature, the additions are shown as all caps and underline, and the strikeouts show the deletions. So anyway, and I thought I'd break this discussion into two parts, one is to just show you section by section, page by page, and there's sixty-one pages in the charter, so we'll kind of go through that relatively fast, but you could see every change that we're suggesting. A lot of the changes are more sort of typographical errors, spelling errors, formatting errors, removing references to the city code, changing, you know, making it pronoun neutral, and that's, those are a lot of the changes. Now, there are some substantive changes that we can touch on, and if we go, you know, the first page is simply showing the changes from getting rid of the references to the city code. Drew, if you go to next, the next page. Okay, and you could see, again, that's, it's more, it explains what, what you're looking at, and that would be, you know, for the electors to view now, and I'll just touch on this and explain it in more detail later. The, the method by which staff is, I think, recommending that council choose for these amendments is to have the ordinance generally summarize the changes on the ballot question and make reference to the document that you're looking at now, which would be an exhibit to the ordinance by which the ballot title was set, so that if, if the voters wanted to look at every single change, they would simply look at the ordinance and look at the document you're currently looking at to determine if they're in favor or against any of the changes. It, when, when we first started looking at this, we talked about, well, should we detail all the changes as separate ballot questions, or try to combine some so that if they got voted down, it wouldn't vote down the whole thing, it would just vote down that particular question. Problem is, other than the typos and the spelling errors and that sort of thing, most of the changes kind of stand on their own, and we came up with about fifteen questions, which made for a very long ballot. And we came up with about 15 questions, which made for a very long ballot. And in looking at what other jurisdictions have done and what other people recommended, the idea of having a ballot that long seemed to be more complicated than perhaps most voters would want to deal with. And if they really wanted to get down in the weeds, they could certainly look at this document as an attachment to the ordinance. So that's the way we're recommending. Doesn't mean that's the way counsel needs to do it or should do it, but that's the recommendation. So if we keep going down, Drew, to the the next page. Okay, and again, these are just numbering, it's references that go towards the city code. So you can go to the next page. And again, city code ordinance histories, code comparative tables. That's all stuff that will be included in the ordinance amendments. We get to the index. And again, we're getting rid of anything that's code related. So you go to the next page. And yeah, this is all kind of boilerplate for the company that codifies our documents. So here's the prefatory statement of the charter. And again, this this is stuff that was in the original charter. And we're not recommending any changes other than we'll, you know, clean up any grammar or punctuation or anything. But so you can see that that prefatory statement would stay in. So you go down to the next. Okay. Okay, so you could see one example here. Go back up a little, Drew, above the preamble there. And you could see it says, the administrative officer of the city will be the city manager appointed by the council on the base. And it previously said of his executive and administrative abilities. And we just said of their executive and administrability so that it's not gender specific. And again, that those changes throughout that paragraph just show that the the city manager might be a woman, so we don't want to have our language referencing that. So go down to the next page. Really, the major changes. If you'll go to page 10, section three, and the second paragraph there. It currently says, you know, no member of the council shall hold any other public office or employment for which compensation is paid from municipal funds. No person shall be elected or appointed to any city office position or employment for which the compensation was increased or fixed by the council while he or she was a member thereof. And you can read, we deleted that language and replaced it with the the all with the the language below that on page 11 at the top there. And you can see it starts with no elected or appointed. And this and apparently there was some some question from council members on whether this is necessary. But it this change currently reads that it's got to be, you can't be appointed or hired by the city if you're on council until one year after you resign or recalled or term limited from serving on council. That that language is not uncommon in in codes, but certainly it's there's nothing legal that would say that you have to leave it at one year. You could, I mean, you could say, hey, if you resign from council on Friday, you could get hired on Monday by the city. So I guess that's that's one area that counsel may want to discuss and and see if it's something that they think should be left in there. So if anybody has a comment on that, do I speak up now? We'll we'll obviously, and again, we'll have a first and second reading on this. So if you see something that later comes to mind, let let us know what comment you have.
Well, I certainly don't think you should be able to resign from council and immediately be hired by the city of Cortez. That just that reeks of inappropriate. It just doesn't pass the smell test. I'm not opposed to a smaller time limit than one year. But if we were working on Monday and decided to fire Billy Bob and because I want that job, I resigned from city council and take the job, that would just be wrong. So that's my opinion on that.
I'm fine with the way it reads right now. I have no issues with it.
Yeah, I totally agree. And I think it kind of opens things up if someone potentially had some grudge in some way, shape or form, they didn't leave in council in a normal way, either the end of the term or some extenuating circumstances. So one year seems really appropriate to me.
Yeah, I would I would agree. I think the important thing is we shouldn't ever have a circumstance where a council member votes on a budget that potentially adds a position of some sort. And then six months later, under that same budget is able to able to financially benefit. So I think a year gets us outside of that, even when with the elections in April, a year gets you into the next budget. So I think that I think that does what it needs to do.
Okay.
You can't see it, Pat, but everybody's shaking their head. It's on council right now.
All right. All right. The next, I guess, substantive change. If you look on page 13, under the powers of the council.
Mr. Coleman?
We, yes.
Before you go forward, I just have a general question. I was wondering if you could give me some insight into. Under section five oath of office, it it has, it states in the first paragraph, before entering upon the duties of their office, each council member, the mayor, the city manager, the city attorney, the city clerk and judge of the municipal court, and each director of a department shall take, subscribe and file with the city clerk an oath or affirmation. I was kind of curious as to why we have the or the precedence for having a director of a department taking an oath of office. I mean, this is the only place that I've seen this. I understand the other officials, but a department head. I was just wondering if you could give me some input on that.
Yeah, and to best of my knowledge, that that provision has been in there for a few years anyway. I I don't know, it's certainly not the standard throughout the state. And you're correct, many jurisdictions have their manager, their attorney. And of course, in a county setting, all the elected officials take the oath of office, but not department heads. Cortez, I think, is, and I couldn't tell you if it's in the majority or the minority. But I I did notice that when I started here, that it seemed a little odd. We do it every year as part of the senior staff meeting. And and they they do it all at once, so it's not a big time consuming process or anything. But you're you're correct, that's it's it's one of those things that is not legally required. And I think it would be if the council chose to remove any of the the current offices that are required to swear an oath, that you could do that as part of this change.
I have no problem with it. I was just wondering, I just thought it curious.
Yeah, no, it's it's probably a little unusual, but not not out of the ordinary necessarily.
Counsel, if I can interject on that, just one thought that comes to my mind on possibly why that is. And honestly, I have zero problem with it because of the fiduciary responsibility each department head has to this city, including fiscal responsibility, every one of them, you know, spends a lot of city money every year. And honestly, this is just one more affirmation, in my opinion, to the people of Cortez that I'm going to do my job right and in good faith.
Okay, Pat, I think you can continue.
Okay, so if you go down to page 13, actually in section two, if you recall, council passed an ordinance that allows council to appear remotely. And in in the second paragraph of section two on page 13, it indicated that the compensation would be paid every two weeks, but that a council person shall not receive a payment for a meeting which they did not attend, period. And to remove any confusion, we change it to they did not attend either in person or remotely so that it would reflect the ordinance that you recently passed that says if you repair remotely, you're still appearing at the meeting. And so you would be entitled under this change to receive compensation.
I have two two comments about this section. One is, do we have the ability to raise the compensation outside of the charter?
No.
And then?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
And then the second one is, do we want to base pay on meetings attended? Or a just stipend that's general? Because I know any of us who've missed meetings, we still read the packet. We still do everything around that. We just haven't, you know, we're at the meeting to make the decision. But I think we still all work hard towards our role, so.
Those are my two questions for counsel to consider.
I also just wanted to ask in on that, Pat, when was the last time the compensation was raised? And like?
I could look at that. It's probably been many, many years, maybe a couple decades.
I would like to see the compensation raised with inflation and also to consider if we're going to pay, stay on the pay per meeting, then I think we should also add in there like our annual like budget meeting and workshops that we do there every year, and we do them as frequently as these. And they're also, you know, open to the public.
Okay.
Yeah, I
Any other?
Well, I think this is an area that we have just briefly talked about in the past, but we really haven't delved into it and and looked at it closely. I remember when Councilmember Spruill brought this up many meetings ago. And, you know, I I went and looked at cities that are comparable in our size. And we're getting $6,000 a year or the mayor is. And, you know, these municipalities are paying their council members like $32,000 a year. I mean, I was shocked by it. So we're we're not even in the ballpark. And by no means am I saying we we go to that level. But I would like to know when the last time council has had an increase. And I think we're going to be shocked by it. And I think that needs some some kind of increase. But we we really haven't had a full discussion on it. And I think we need to do that. I think we need to 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 look at other municipalities and, you know, have baseline data to refer from.
I agree with everybody. It's it's been since the 90s, I think, we checked into it. It's been since the 90s since the council had a little bit of a raise. And one council member referred to this position as a voluntary position. Sometimes it feels like it because it costs us more to attend some of these meetings than we get in return. And nobody is here to make a living out of it, but I think they ought to be compensated. I like Councilmember DeHaven's idea of paying for the day long meetings that we go to, budget hearings and things of that nature. And I think it's a good idea. I also think that we probably won't be getting any of this money until after our term is ended or at least two years. And I'm okay with that, too, because I don't want it to look like it's self-serving. I think in the future, if we want to get good council members, which we do, I think they ought to be compensated for it.
Yeah, no matter what decision is made there, whether whether it is deferred to councils to make those decisions for future councils, I think it should be important that that it a council can't vote a raise for themselves. It has to be for a future council. I think that's an important feature of this. It would have to be, it would have to be in multiple, like if it's every two years is a new council, even if it was, you could only do it in the first year and and then it was for the next council, something like that. I don't think the idea of of a council right before an election, voting for new, voting for a raise and then getting reelected, I think that's something we should try and avoid at all costs.
Yeah, I would really like to see this addressed when we do the updates. But I do think we need some more information. It'd be great to have some comparables from other cities our size. I'd also like information about if they're doing per meeting payments or just a general compensation. Yeah.
Okay, so we can do that research and provide the data to you prior to the first reading. And it it sounds like perhaps you're wanting a possible change to reflect either a change in the amount or a change in the and or a change in the the method by which it's calculated, if we're going to base it on number of meetings and that sort of thing. We can do that. And if there's, if the council is kind of in agreement that we should bring forward even a couple options for that issue, we can do that and put it in the ordinance for first reading. Is that is that what I'm hearing from you?
Excuse me, counselor. From what I'm hearing from my the other council members up here, it would, it seems to be appropriate that this would be the compensation in the amount would be removed from the charter and then set forth as an ordinance is what would have to happen. Am I correct in my assumption of that or incorrect?
I think that
I would agree.
Yeah, I think we need to discuss that.
Yeah, counsel, I think what we're looking at here is we got two issues. Number one, we've got, you know, that's in charter, which means it would have to be a charter change, which would be something that we would want to address tonight and have the city attorney's office set that for the next time. We may wish to take this out of here and just renew the language a little bit that just says council will be compensated and then refer to an ordinance that has to be just says council will be compensated, and then refer to an ordinance that has to be passed, that is effective for the next council, so does that make sense? But before we can do that, we have to get this charter passed and through the voter process, and then, you know, if that's approved, then pass an ordinance, which would be for the next one, so we're essentially talking two and a half years away.
Yeah, I think that's really the best approach for a few reasons, but I think mainly I, it takes us so long, I mean, it seems like we update the charter so infrequently that that should be something that maybe is a little bit more flexible, so I would agree with just taking it out completely and running it by ordinance, I think there are a few examples that maybe we're going to see here in a little bit that are similar to that, and yeah, that's all I'll say.
I do think that this is a good example of potentially its own question, something that should stand by itself as opposed to with all of the other smaller corrections, I think we want to make sure that we're, that we are asking individually on some items to the community, particularly things like that, I think it would be much better if that's its own question.
That's what I was going to say, and I guess it makes more sense for me now to remove that and treat it separately as an ordinance, because I was sitting here thinking that we don't want this one thing to really tank an entire section come spring, so I think that really has potential, I think that there could be some potential blowback, people don't know what city council does, and I can see a lot of people saying, well, gosh, why are we, why are we paying more? I don't know, I think about other towns around us, too, not just towns that are our size, and how often they meet, and those sorts of things, and, you know, I guess I look at it a little bit differently, it's, you know, not, I didn't run for the money, really, is what it comes down to.
Mayor Protam, could we make sure that Mr. Coleman heard that, and I'm sorry to cut you off, Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, I heard it, and so I'm trying to, if councilmember Lewis and Keef Offer, if I hear you correctly, and I didn't hear any objections from the others, that perhaps we remove the amount of compensation from the charter altogether, make that a separate ballot question, and then bring you some options with regards to the second paragraph of section two, which details the process by which council members are paid, if it's just a set amount, or if it's based on number of meetings, and if so, if it's based on meetings, then do the extra meetings, such as the budget retreat and those sort of things, are they factored in, so do you want all of that to be placed in an ordinance, or just the amount of the compensation?
I would like to see what we're asking for before we do anything, I think it's going to need a little bit more diving into, and I agree with Keef Offer and Dobree, that it should be standalone, but before we make a money amount, I think we need to discuss it a lot more.
Yeah, I agree, we need to discuss it further, but I do agree with the others, I think we need to have this in the form of an ordinance. Patrick, though, the starting point for me is, I definitely want to know last time council has received an increase in compensation, I think that drives everything.
I mean, I could be mistaken, but I think that the person that recommended this amount was Jim Herrick, Jimmy Herrick, and that would have been, I'm guessing around 2000, or 2002, in that area, maybe around then, because it was right before I came on council, and I know that Jimmy was the one that put that up, so.
The note on that section says the last time it was amended was November 4th, 1975.
Yeah, I think that's not right.
No, and you can see, and the reason we've deleted that is, it references two different ordinances, and in 1975, the ordinance numbers were way much lower than 906, and 1068 would have been just a few years ago, because we're only at 1300 now, so, but that doesn't mean that the amount was amended, that means that that section was amended in some fashion, but I'll find out when they actually changed the compensation and get you that information.
Counselor and councilmembers, would it be appropriate to change section two, then, to say the mayor and each council member shall receive compensation as per ordinance, period, and then it can be fleshed out, all the information, the data gathering, and the ordinance is later date, is that a workable solution?
Everybody's nodding their head, I think, yeah, Pat, everybody's nodding their head that that's acceptable.
Mayor Protam, if I might just add to that, we would want to perhaps consider leaving in charter effective for the next council, so we don't lead a future council astray somehow.
Once again, everybody's nodding their head.
Okay, all right, so I think we've got what you want to be, so it'll go in the ordinance, the proposed ordinance for the ballot question, you won't, you'll delete the amount and just say it will be done by ordinance, and then we'll provide you with additional information on the second paragraph as to how the compensation is determined, and whether it's a flat fee, or based on per-meeting attended, or some other manner that we discover, and we can decide whether you want that as a separate, by any of these changes, if you want them a separate ballot question, or just to be part of the generic ballot. Okay, I think Danielle may have a thought on the timing of the last change, Danielle, do you want to speak up on that?
Sure, I found ordinance number 1068, and that was an ordinance putting the ballot question of increasing council salary on the ballot of April 2006. I haven't seen where or when exactly that impacted, like when the pay started changing, but this, the last time it was put to the ballot, to the voters, was April 2006 to increase council pay.
What was it, what did it increase to?
I haven't found that yet. It just increased, the mayor shall receive as compensation 500 per month, and members of council shall receive as compensation 400 per month, but it doesn't say what it was before that.
Okay, but we know the current, the current level comes from 2006, so 19 years ago, 20 years ago, because we're looking at a 2026 ballot.
And Danielle, did that state that it's paid per month, or it doesn't state per council meeting?
It says such compensation shall be paid every two weeks, no council person shall receive a payment for a meeting which he or she did not attend, the mayor and council members may, upon order of the council, be paid necessary bona fide expenses incurred in service on behalf of the city as authorized and itemized.
So that's the current language?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If we want to go down to section three...
Give us just a second, we're having some technical difficulty for just a second here, they're trying to work it out. We're not able to read the sections yet, they're trying to work through it.
Yeah, they're still working on it here, so.
I, I'm assuming, just for time's sake, we can go ahead and continue, but just so you know, we can't see it in front of us unless we have it.
Sure, okay, under section three of that article three, the section is entitled Powers of Council, and the first power designated is to appoint and remove the city manager. We're recommending that you add the city attorney and the municipal judge, because it's clear you have that authority and that power, but it consolidates it all into one subsection, so that it's clear that the city manager, city attorney, and the municipal judge all are subject to appointment and removal by the council.
I think that's a good addition.
Okay, the next subsection, it says the council may by ordinance create, change, and abolish offices, departments, or agencies, and assign additional functions to offices, departments, or agencies, and then it says established by this charter, but not to discontinue any office, department, or agency established by this charter. We are recommending that that last part of the sentence that starts with established by this charter be deleted, and our recommendation, as you'll see further on in our amendments, is that the creation and abolishment of the various departments should be a council responsibility, and not be part of the charter, and that you, and one example would be, the charter currently says we're supposed to have a Department of Municipal Utilities, and I asked Rick Smith, who had been here for now almost 38 years ago, and he says he never remembers there being a Department of Municipal Utilities in the whole time he's been around, and so, but it remains in the charter, so technically, the council or the city is out of compliance, because we don't have a Department of Municipal Utilities, and I think it makes sense that that should be a council function, and not, you know, the types of departments that are required or necessary might fluctuate over time as conditions change, and you may decide to combine a couple departments and create one overriding department, and that should be the council's authority, rather than something that the charter has to be amended to accomplish, so that's why we deleted that, and then we addressed that further on in the charter changes. The next change in that...
Excuse me, counselor. Counsel, excuse me. Mayor Protam, may I raise a question to the council?
Oh, absolutely.
I think our time is 6:30 right now, is that correct? And can we take a quick break? We've got about 35 pages to go on this thing before 7:30 and our scheduled meeting time for the regular council, so.
Sure, everybody want to take about a 10-minute? Let's do, let's do a seven-minute break. Mayor Medina, are you able to hear all of us? We don't, we can't hear you unless you speak, so we don't know if you're there or not, you still with us?
Yeah, okay, and so we're taking a seven-minute break, coming back at 6:37?
Yeah, anytime you want to say something, feel free to break in.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, if everybody's ready, we'll get going again. Pat, you with us?
I am.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, we were on section three of article three, and that's on, um, page thirteen, powers of the council. Section A and section D are mostly cleanup items, best practices. The, I guess the more substantive change is in paragraph B, in which we're starting to make reference to the fact that, it should be up to the council and not the charter to determine what departments or agencies are needed, and, uh, to change that from time to time by ordinance. So that's, that's one thought, and, and we can kind of suspend discussion on that until we get later on. You'll see where that becomes a big issue further on in the, in the charter changes. So unless anybody has anything they want to say specifically now, I would say we should go to section four on page fourteen. And if you'll recall, we adopted an ordinance earlier this year regarding remote participation by council members, and there was some concern by some of the council members that, uh, the charter prohibited remote participation. So in order to, uh, ensure that there is no conflict between the ordinance and the charter language, section four contains several changes to reflect the remote participation option. So if you, if you want to look that over and, and kind of discuss it again, it largely reflects what was determined by ordinance early in the year.
Pat, Patrick?
Yes.
We do have limitations on, on that, uh, attending remotely, and it can't exceed, um, six meetings per year. I think that needs to be in there.
You, you want it in the charter? One, one thought I had on that was, it's kind of a new, your, your new rules, your specific rules are new and, and untested. And you may end up determining that it should only apply to four meetings, or you may determine it should be extended to eight. So the question is, do you want to put that kind of detail in the charter or simply leave it up to that ordinance that you've already adopted with, with those specific rules?
I would rather just leave it in the ordinance, like the compensation, like similar languages, so we can change it if needed and not have to go.
I agree, it should be in ordinance in case we want to change it, it is new.
Then I, I think there should be some language in there that, that reflects that we have limitations, or else, you know, we, we could have someone reading this thinking, okay, now they can attend.
Could it say like as limited by the ordinance, something like?
Yeah, as lo, or make some reference to that we do have a limitation.
Or as set by the ordinance?
Okay, we can do that. All right. Now, the next substantive change is, um, on page seventeen, section eleven.
Excuse me, councillor. Can we go back to?
Yes.
Section five ordinances, resolutions, and motions generally on page fifteen? So, at one point in time here, not too long ago, we had, I, I can't remember where we actually got the instruction from, but we were advised that we were supposed to say yes or no instead of aye or nay. And, um, and so as a council, we pretty much adopted that in order to, uh, avoid confusion. And so here it says ayes and nays shall be taken upon the passage of all ordinances. Is this a place that it should be noted that we should be saying yes or no? Or, I, I mean, I'm just trying to keep it simple and make sure we're sticking with the same plan. Thanks.
Yeah, no, I, I think we can change that to yes or no.
I pointed that out earlier to the city manager, so I, I agree it should be yes or no, on my, it's my opinion. I agree as well.
Okay. All right. So if you go to page seventeen under section eleven, the, the way the current charter language states, we have to publish all ordinances in a whole unless the council deems it appropriate to publish only the title with a brief summary. And we, we've taken that to mean that all, it's appropriate for all ordinances to be published by, uh, the title with a summary. And this language clarifies that because we, you know, we wanted to get away from having to publish the entire ordinance. Uh, so this would allow you to adopt a, a resolution that makes it the rule for all ordinances. Now, that doesn't mean you can't publish an ordinance completely, but it doesn't require you to. Was there any? Any thought to whether that is a good change?
Well, I think given the fact that it says shall be made available in either digital or paper format for public inspection, I'm comfortable with that.
I agree.
Okay.
We either have a thumbs up or everybody's nodding yes.
All right, that sounds good. The, the next substantive, uh, change, let's see, um, on page twenty-six, and this is section six of article five.
Excuse me, councillor.
Yes.
Can, back to, uh, page eighteen on section one, when held in terms of office. Um, I, I was looking specifically for term limits in here, and I was wondering where that is addressed in the, in the charter.
Um, it's, it's not in this section. It, it's, uh, it's in another section, I, I can't cite it off the top of my head, but we're not recommending any changes to that.
Right, but I, I'm, I read through the whole thing today and didn't see it anywhere.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and if it was in a, another section, which council member Randall or I haven't found, it should be under this.
Yeah, it should be in this, held in terms of office, so. It may not be a question we get an answer to tonight, but I was just wondering if you could put it on your list of things to look into and see what you can find.
All right. And you, you're not recommending changes
I just want to see where it's defined.
To the number of terms, term limits, you just want to be sure it's in there.
Yeah, it, it's the place for it to be, I think, appropriately, and whatever's just currently in place is fine with me. I, I just looking for a place to find it.
Okay. Got that. Um, so under, uh, article five, section two, it talks about terms of office for appointed officials. Technically, we don't have terms of office. We're appointed and then we serve at the pleasure of the council. If you'll read section two, it says all such appointed officials shall be appointed by the council, and each shall hold office at the pleasure of the council or until the next general municipal election succeeding the appointment. We're recommending delete that reference to the next general municipal election because, uh, we're not aware of any impact that the election would have on the appointed officials serving at the pleasure of the council. It doesn't matter when council was elected or who, who holds those offices. They, as a council, they have the ability to, uh, appoint or remove an appointed official. So it, it seemed that that language was somewhat misplaced.
What page are you on, Pat?
I'm on page, uh, twenty-four, section two.
Mayor Protem, Mr. Coleman, while we're changing that, uh, that's page twenty-four, is that what you said? I just want to make sure that we go back to that terms of office. I'm not sure that we were clear, or at least maybe, I want to make sure you understood clearly. What I heard from the council was that we need to ensure that, that their terms of office or the term limitation is in that section. Did I hear that correctly, councillor? I'm seeing heads nod, so I just want to make sure you received that.
That's what everybody agrees, yes.
And I want to make sure Mr. Coleman received that as well.
That, that's what I understood.
Thank you.
And when we talk about terms of office, we're talking term limitations for elected officials.
Yes.
Okay.
Till you get to page twenty-four, and then it talks about terms of office of appointed officials, and, uh, you can see the, the recommended change, it doesn't seem to be relevant or, it just doesn't make sense. There's a reference to an election for the appointment of a, uh, an appointed official.
Yeah, oop, sorry.
So if, no challenges or questions there, go down to page twenty-six, section six. And thi, this is back to the idea that the departments, the creation or the abolition, or the combination of various departments should be done by council by ordinance rather than listed in the charter. Because you, you can see in section six, it references a Department of Planning and Building, which we don't have. We have a Department of Community and Economic Development, which campaign, contains a planning division and a building division. But the thought is we should remove references to specific departments and, and, and how they're set up and who, who determines, you know, I don't think the, requiring the city manager to appoint a director, that kind of detail should be in the, in the charter, it seems, uh.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'd like to leave some flexibility there.
Yeah.
I, I agree, I think we should.
Okay. Um, we, we left the creation of the municipal court and, and the, the city attorney, um, in there because we thought those, you know, those are the three main, along with the city manager, that was addressed further up in the charter. We left them, we did do some, uh, changes to section four on page twenty-eight for the appointment and qualifications of the city attorney. It, it initially, and they, they changed that initially, said that you had to practice for law for three years in the city of Cortez, which seemed to eliminate getting anybody from out of town for the job. And they changed that to three years, uh, licensed in the state of Colorado. And I think if you talk to the recruiters, they often find very competent and qualified applicants for city attorney positions that are licensed in another state. And so our recommendation is that you move it to five years because I don't think you want somebody that's that green and inexperienced with only three years' experience. That seems to be a low bar. I would recommend five years and leave it open to people licensed outside the state of Colorado. However, uh, it, it states further down that, uh, they have to be, uh, licensed in Colorado before they can assume the position.
That makes sense, we border three other states.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm com, I'm very comfortable with this. I agree with you on that, Patrick. It, it just opens up our applicant pool.
Yeah. And it's got some language on that, that the city attorney represents the employees in the council except in, uh, you know, employment matters where there's a conflict between the, the employee and the, the council or the city, in which case it's clear that the city attorney represents the city and the city council and the supervisor, as the case may be, rather than the employee. And it, it clarifies that the city attorney cannot represent an imposing party. I, I think, and, and you can see we're getting rid of the reference to a member of his firm. This was probably drafted, well, it was drafted, uh, back when the city attorney was a part-time position and, uh, you had, like Mike Green's law firm had other clients that potentially could be adverse to the city. And so this just clarifies that the city can't, the, the attorney can't represent an opposing party.
Makes sense.
Yeah, okay. Let's see. Now, if you go to page twenty-nine, article eight or article seven, Roman numeral seven, section one. So that's page twenty-nine.
Two-nine or four-nine? I heard four-nine.
Two-nine, two-nine.
Councillor?
Yes.
I have a, I have a question that I want to put to the other council members here regarding this upcoming, um, this upcoming section that we have, particularly pages twenty-nine to thirty-nine. And it's a sort of a general question. And so, it has to do with the elimination of the departments in the charter, right? So, we have multiple departments that we're talking about. We're talking about finance, we're talking about, I mean, all sorts of departments, including the Department of Health, which we have none, right? So, I understand the reasoning behind this is so that we might give more flexibility to both the council and to administration in the performance of their duties and keeping it in ordinance as much as possible. That concept is a good concept in my mind. However, listed in a multitude of these departments are really important, I think, concepts, particularly having to do with our fiscal responsibility. And, and they're outlined in the charter. And I think it's, they include some of the reasons why our city is in such good financial shape, right? And so, I hate to just blanket-go-across and say, "We're going to get rid of the Department of Finance Administration under the charter and their duties." Or, "We're going to," including the utilities, or the budget estimates, or the fiscal budget and accounting year, and special funds. All these things are pretty complicated. And, and I, I'm, I'm really quite uncomfortable in saying, "Look, we just wipe it out" and put it into ordinance. And I recognize that it would require quite a bit of parsing out to keep it or, I mean, I'm just trying to look at you all and get your input on how you feel about this because I just think the, the guardrails for our city, as far as our fiscal responsibility, a lot of them are in this charter.
I, I agree with you to some extent on that. And I, I think there's areas in there that are deleted that, that need to be put in there. An example would be when the budget needs to be submitted. You know, that's, that's, that's a state requirement that, that we have. Where I disagree with some of that is, when I look at on page twenty-nine, that to me is a job description for the Director of Finance. And, and I don't think we need specifics in the charter for someone's job description.
I, I agree that we don't need specifics for, for, for the Finance Administration job description. But I, I do think in looking through that section, there are some things that we probably should consider keeping in, not as, not as part of Finance Administration, but as, as the, the overall guardrails for future councils, and for our council and future councils. To me, it's not that we're, it's not that we're telling the Finance Director how to do their job with these pieces. It's that we're telling the council how to do and what the guardrails are. And I think that that should be in there, but not as part of, not as part of the description of a Finance Department. The other, the other piece to that is that, is that we are a home rule, we are a home rule entity. And I do want to make sure that we are enumerating some of, some of those things, rather than just defaulting to the state of Colorado, especially with, especially with all of the disagreements we have had about the state of Colorado over, overstepping and, and telling us how to do things. And I think by having, having a lot of that stuff in our charter, it, it protects, it protects us there that we have it in charter and we're doing these things, not because it's Colorado law, but because it's Cortez law, and because it's Cortez Charter.
And we, we can certainly, it, it sounds like most of the issues revolve around financial, I think, guardrails is the term you used. We could change the title of the section to Finance and Accounting and just not list them as duties of a particular department, but just say, "The city shall maintain X, X, Y, Z accounts." And this, you know, put, put the things that are not job description-type issues, but more overall city guardrails that, that you want the council to comply with, as well as the staff. We could put those in one, one section and still eliminate the reference to the Finance Department.
I, I, I think, I think that's a great idea. I see everybody starting to nod their head with that.
I'm, I'm totally in favor of that. I just think it's going to be a bigger job than we're going to be able to do in the next half an hour all alone here, I mean, working our way through this. Everything from contracts to services, of contracts being approved by the council. I mean, there's a multitude capital improvement fund, all the sort of things that need to be stated, as Councilmember Dobree said. So, I'm, I'm totally in favor of it. I just don't want us to lose our north, so to speak. Does that make sense?
I, I'm, I'm waiting to see all the heads, so give me just a second, Pat.
Okay.
Does anybody have any, any added? I, I think everybody's in agreement. We need to work on it a little more, and it's going to take a little more time.
All right. And, and I guess this might be a good time to maybe interrupt. And I, I had asked Drew Sanders the question. I'm not sure we're going to get through all of this discussion tonight. So, what, you know, obviously, we have a first reading and a second reading of the ordinance. But I'm wondering if a special meeting, you know, a special workshop perhaps next week or something would be something that might, we might want to consider to kind of hammer through some of these more detailed changes.
Counselor, would you be able to have a draft available to us prior to that special meeting?
Sure, yeah. And obviously, as far as we get today, I'll incorporate changes and suggestions that, that have come up tonight. You know, to the extent we don't get through everything tonight, then we'll be talking about it on first impression at, at the next special meeting or special workshop.
As far as a, a starting point, I, I think just removing Section One and Section Two, which Section One creates the department, Section Two gives the duties of the director. All of the other sections after that, I believe, relate more to specific, more general Finance Administration, not, not duties. So, I, I think if you took out Section One and Two and then made that the Financial Administration section, it would, it would answer what, what we were talking about. I, I would ask you to kind of read through the rest of them and see if there are any other, any other things that specifically mention the duty of a Finance Director, and then make them more general to the county, the county shall, as opposed to Finance Director shall. But, but I think that those two sections were the, the main ones that, that were very specific job duty-based.
All right. So, and you can, you can see all the way to page thirty-nine, and then thirty-nine comes up on Article Roman numeral eight, Municipal Borrowing. We didn't make any changes there. And then we get down on page forty-three, Article Nine. Is another department that we were suggesting be moved in by ordinance rather than in the charter.
Counselor, under that Article Nine, Section Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven, I think, are appropriate to be left in as a general, as a general operating concept for the city.
Okay.
Pat, can you give me some more information about why you wanted to remove these?
Well, mainly, it was for efficiency. Like I said, there, there's been a reference to the Department of Public Utilities in the charter since before Rick Smith started working for the city almost forty years ago. And as far as we can tell, we've never had a Department of Municipal Utilities, even though it's required by the charter. And the only way you get rid of that requirement now is by going to the vote, which seems, you know, it, it seems like a city council should be able to determine what, what departments are necessary at the, at the time and place that they are conducting their business and overseeing the business of the city. And, you know, and, and perhaps not so much eliminating departments, although that's one that would need to be eliminated. The Department of Public Health is another one that should be eliminated. But it seems like if the council decided to merge a couple departments, and one of the thoughts is, well, perhaps General Services and Public Works is a possible example, that that should be up to the council with input from the administration, the city administrator, the city manager. And it would not be something that they needed to ask the voters for because the voters obviously aren't tuned in to what, what departments are needed to operate the city. And it's a real cumbersome process to change the charter, whereas if you give the council authority by ordinance, they can eliminate a department and the next council can change its mind and, and create that same department or a different department.
Well, Pat, if I-
It just seems like-
If I could make a recommendation, I think, I, I think what I'm hearing from other members of council is that we would want to remove possibly that Section One, the Article Nine, Section One, creating the division, but then keeping the other substantive pieces of that. And I, I think that that could even, Sections Two through, sorry, Seven? Yes, Two through Seven could also even be moved up into that Financial Administration with the other Financial Administration things. I mean, they're all relating to how contracts and services and making sure that we're, there is, there is no participation of officers and employees involved in contracts and, and that we're, we're using competitive bidding and things like that. I think those, those things belong, I think those things make sense to have in charter, but moving them up all into that Financial Administration category and only removing the division of Department of General Services. Does that make sense to the rest of council?
Yeah, I, I-
Sure, now I hear you.
I agree with that completely. One thing, one thing I worry about is seeing with this much being struck from the charter, it makes me worry what voters might think, like we're, we're trying to hide information from them. I, it really bothers me, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, we can, we can kind of just get rid of the job description-type, department creation-type language and keep the more, the, the guardrails, as you referenced earlier.
Okay, I think we can carry on.
All right, so the next, if you go to page forty-seven, under Article, it's, it will be Article Nine, or, well, page forty-seven, Section Six. We, we got rid of the language that you have to go to the vote in order to for the city to construct, condemn, purchase, or acquire or lease waterworks, gasworks, light plants, power plants, transportation systems, telephone systems, heating plants, and other public utilities, local in use and extent. It, it seemed that the, the council should have that authority to either acquire a utility on its own by ordinance. And so, we just added, "By appropriate ordinance may acquire utilities as deemed necessary for the well-being of the community." And then authorize them to issue revenue bonds or other appropriate financial instruments. That's in the charter now. They, if they're going to issue bonds, obviously, they still have, Tabor would require them to do it through a, an election. But it seems that the concept of acquiring a utility should be something the council can do by ordinance rather than limiting it by charter. And so, any discussion you might have on that?
I think this is a, a good idea in case we ever needed to, say, take over the sanitation district or any other utility that we don't currently own, if that scenario came up.
I agree. I think it'd be a lot of red tape if we have to do something emergency-wise. So, I, I think it's a good idea myself. I see the council shaking their head, yes.
All right, we'll move on. So, the next primary change is on Section, or page fifty, and it's Article Eleven. It's currently titled Department of Municipal Public Utilities, which we don't have. Our suggestion was to rename it the Department, or the Water and Water Systems and get rid of the reference to creating the department and the functions and get right to the, the heat of the matter, which is Section Three, that we're changing to Section One. Restriction on sale of water and other utility property. And, and the thought is that water is a pretty key part of the city's resources and infrastructure. And perhaps that should stay in the charter. And, and where it says that you got to go to the vote of the people and, and the, you know, the control, the municipal utility rates, all of that, we were recommending that it stay in, in the charter.
Pat, I think those are all reasonable. I did have one question. The, removing the who shall have paid property tax therein during the preceding calendar year, that's because that's likely not legal. Is that correct? Limiting, limiting an election just to property owners? Is that, that's why we're-
What section are you?
Uh, Section Three, which is now Section One, restriction on sale of water.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, it, it, yeah, we, we wouldn't know how to, who, you know, having to go back and restrict the vote to only people that have paid property tax, yeah, I don't, I don't think that's legal.
Yes, thank you.
And it, it would be a very cumbersome process anyway.
And I, the reason I wanted to draw attention to it is just for the community that some of that cleanup is things that are antiquated, some of the cleanup as we're, that we're doing to the whole thing is things that are antiquated and likely or definitely illegal that we don't want to be, have in our charter and be holding in our charter any longer.
Yeah, I, I agree completely on that. I, I think it looks good, Patrick. Those are good changes.
Okay. So, the next major change is on page fifty-three. And this is the Public, Department of Public Works and Public Improvements, the creation and functions. And our idea was that perhaps that should- And our idea was that perhaps that should all go into ordinance, but I think some of the same arguments that have been brought up regarding the other department eliminations might apply here.
So Counselor, that would be keeping Section 3, 4, 5, and 6 in place?
Yeah, I think that, at first glance, that, that looks appropriate.
I see no objection from the council on it, Pat.
Okay. Just go. 6, okay. Then the next one on page 56 is the Department of Parks and Recreation. And you can see in the first Section 1 there that's deleted. It says, "A department may be created by ordinance." And then it goes on to say, "The department shall exercise administrative functions as to," and then it, it lists all the duties, so. They kind of split the baby with the bathwater there. They're allowing you to create the department by ordinance. But if you do create it, these are all the duties. And our thought was that that whole section, I, I don't really know that there are any guardrail type rules, that are in there that should, should remain of that one.
I think if we're going to keep anything, just the beginning of Section 3, "The council shall have power by ordinance to adopt all needful, needful rules and regulations relating to properties and related facilities under supervision." Actually, I forget the "under supervision," just all properties and related facilities for parks and recreation in the city of Cortez, I think would solve, solve that.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I see no disagreement from council.
All right. Let's see, it's... You're talking about section, which section were you referencing?
Uh, I was referencing, uh, Section 3 of the Parks and Recreation, the, starting, "The council shall have power by ordinance to adopt all needful rules and regulations." If it was just limited basically to that first sentence and then saying, rather than saying, "Under the supervision of Departments of Recreation," just say, "Related to parks and recreation in the city of Cortez."
Okay. All right. And then, uh, Article 15, reference, and that's on page 57 as well, references the Police Department. It, if you look at, it, it looks more like, in my mind, more ordinance type stuff. And again, you know, we thought, well, you're always going to have a police department, but not necessarily. There may be some, some situation whereby intergovernmental agreement, the, the city and the county combine law enforcement and we don't need a police department. We have, we, we direct our revenues to the, the county or something. You know, it, it, it just seems like the, the language in there was not necessarily things that needed to be in the charter. So I'll certainly leave it up to you if you have other thoughts on Article 15.
Pat, I would agree about those, but I, I do think, like we've done with some of those others, it would be beneficial to have maybe, maybe call it public safety and that the city council is responsible for public safety in the city of Cortez through, I, I, I mean, you can legalize that, but really that's the only sentence we, we really need is that we're responsible for public safety in the city of Cortez.
Sure.
I would add to that, what's listed under Section 2 functions. As far as preservation of public peace, prevention of crime, all that sort of stuff needs to stay in there too. I don't know that you need the duties of the chief anymore, again, that's-
No, I, I think that, that functions and just make it that it's the, the council's responsibility and, and that we, just like everything else, we delegate where appropriate.
Exactly. I think duties of chief, that's just a job description. That doesn't need to be in the charter.
All right. Okay. Bottom of page 58, we've deleted the Board of Health. With the Department of Health. And then on, on to page 59, we deleted the, authority to create a Department of Education. We thought that could be by ordinance and, you call it kind of generic. You may, you may exercise and you may, by ordinance provide. So it's not really a mandate anyway. So our thought was just get rid of Article 18.
What, what page are you on?
59.
Uh, 59.
59.
Oh, you're talking about aviation.
Why would we want, why would we want to get rid of Section 1 under aviation? I mean, that's, we're, we're actively involved in our aviation program and the airport. I, I just, I mean, and we plan to keep that, I-
Yes, but just, we want to establish that by ordinance instead of in charter.
I, 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 I agree with striking that.
City Manager, I have a question. We, we're talking about doing, putting a lot into ordinances here right away. So that, this is going to be a lot of work on ordinances, needs to be done in the first half of 2026, it looks like.
Yeah, should this pass, that's correct.
And with, our, our plan was to anticipate, and, and it'll go into the second half of our discussion, which we may have to continue, but, uh, depending on what the voters approve, we, we'll prepare ordinances or end ordinance, as needed to implement all of the changes that are referenced so that, um, they, you know, no, no department that currently exists will cease to exist once the vote is held. And, and so we'll, we'll, we'll do all those ordinance changes. They will have to kind of wait until after the vote is certified. But other than that, that's all of the changes that we're suggesting. And then the, the, the next order of discussion, which may be appropriate as the council deems necessary to have a, this, this, discuss, discuss this at a different, uh, meeting. Looks like we're about to run out of time, but trying to determine how it should be stated in the, uh, the ordinance by which the ballot measure is approved.
Counselor, can you, you mentioned having a second work session next week sometime. Mayor Protem, should we discuss that?
I think we have to discuss it. It's, we didn't want to do that. We all agreed that we wanted to do that in a work session and we didn't want to have a special meeting, especially with Christmas coming on. So I guess we'll leave it up to council and have a decision. Uh, let's, let's listen to the mayor. Mayor, what do you think about a special session next week?
Um, I would need to join virtually as well, but, uh, virtually again, but, um, this is definitely important, so I'm with the majority.
Uh, it, it's very important to me as well. I, yeah. What's everybody think? City Manager, we'd like to set up a work session for next week.
Okay.
It's going to have, for me to attend, it's going to have to be after Wednesday, because I'm gone all next week in town.
After Wednesday?
After Wednesday.
So can I suggest Thursday evening, the 18th?
That works for me.
What time does council want to start?
I'm unavailable that night.
Okay.
We can also, have to be after Wednesday, you said. So I guess we could do Friday if council really felt strongly about that too.
Yeah, I don't think I will be, I'm not available Thursday or Friday.
I, I can do a Wednesday evening.
Okay, Wednesday evening?
Okay, uh, I would say Wednesday of those.
December 17?
I'm fine with, uh, Wednesday, although we have to be cognizant, we have a 7th Street meeting that goes until 5 o'clock, so it would have to, I think we need a, a little break in there, but, before we have our meeting. So, um, anytime after 6?
Could we say 6 safely? Would that be okay, or we want it after 6?
6 o'clock works for me. It works for, uh, Randall, sorry. Uh, Devin?
Yeah.
Okay, Keith Hoffer?
Yeah.
Okay, so I am hearing December 17, 6:00 PM, in this building here, this room here. And at that time, we will have, or the city attorney's office will have an updated version and some more information to finalize and prepare us for January 13th, wherein we hopefully will have a first reading of an ordinance ready.
Thank you. Mayor, did you-
Works for me.
Thanks. The one thing I, I wanted to ask is, could we have a cleaned up version with the notes from today as soon as, as soon as it's available, as soon as it's possible?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to get that by the end of the week here.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, that was very intense. Uh, let's go on to, which is Castle General Discussion.
Uncle.
Anybody have anything? Mayor Medina? Okay, we have nothing further, so let's all, uh, take a break until 7:30. Let's, let's go 7:35. Let's give it a, four more minutes.
I'm signing off.
Thanks, Pat.
All right.